Trustee Folcher. Trustee Thompson.
Present.
Trustee Williams.
Here.
Trustee Brooks.
Present.
Mayor Rudes. Trustee McFadden.
Present.
Trustee Lewis.
Both sides.
Trustee McFadden.
Both sides.
Trustee Folcher. Did they put him in there? I sent them. Trustee Williams.
Both sides.
Trustee Brooks.
Both sides.
Trustee, Mayor Rudes.
Both sides.
Thompson.
Trustee Thompson.
Question, which minutes? December 12?
There are.
Both sides. I said both sides.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Excuse me. I'd like to thank the village manager today. I went to the village hall. Everyone knows that Linda Koch passed just a few days ago. So we're making arrangements for her. And anyone that would like to, they'll be reaching out to people. That was a very hard thing. And I knew her many, many years. And what she's done for this village has been phenomenal. So keep the family in prayer. They're awesome. Most of them here from Canada as her parents. So her mother unfortunately is not here to be there with her because she passed. So with that said also, I'd like to know if my husband wanted to ask the question, when was there going to be a finance meeting? Because he has some concerns about our budget. And also, I received something from Joliet. And it was my, I had to file my economic disclosures. Okay, I'm trying to understand something. Am I on the but, am I on the agenda tonight?
No.
Okay. I don't know what game you're playing. And it's sick. I've been months and months nominated to two commissions. And not once have I been on this committee. Have I been sworn in? I did attend the fire and police. And the guy told us that night, I said, so who are you? He said, well, I was, I got a call to come here. So he was there. He hadn't been there for nine months. Okay, I did it for you. Haven't received anything. My nurse, I mean, the clerk has told me that she gave me as much as she can. And she's still working on that. But she's not giving cooperation as far as responding. But I can always put paper to pen and I'll get a resolution from that. I also would like to know, should I call Joliet and let them know that I'm not on the commission? Plan commission? Because I was supposed to be on it. They say, I said, who sent it? She said, the clerk sent it. And I said, okay, so I filled it out. And there was a vacancy opened, not like on the game we're playing with the fire and police. But there was one for planning commission. And all of a sudden now, I don't know what to do. But I will inform the right people what's going on here with this. I don't know why. You have signs out here to say, oh, volunteer, volunteer. And people volunteering and they getting rejected. But they getting ignored. That's unacceptable to me. So we're trying to make this village something because it's nothing. It's been struggling for years. And now we're trying to help it. And this is what we get, games. So with that said, I wish someone would take care of the business and do what they're supposed to do and stop playing games. Because I'm not the one. I really am not. And I appreciate my work in this village for years before I was a mayor and before I was a trustee for 20 years here. I did a lot in this village and I'm still concerned. And I have a right to still have a part in where I live and what I'm paying taxes for. Chief, I'm letting you know too, I took a picture of 14 young men at the park. And I was coming down my street and they were approaching our street. That many kids do not live on my block. And I know who lives on my block. All of us know the families. So when I pulled them in my driveway, they stopped and they went back to the park. So I don't know what's going on, but I don't, I might just stand out there a lot of time. I can defend my own self, okay? I'm not, I'm not playing with these chucks out here, okay? And if I can, can I approach the board, please, something? I'd like to get one of the trustees.
Sure. And Mr. Covington, I don't like when you come to the public and say this village isn't anything, you know? And I'm just gonna speak, I'm gonna speak to you because if I'm gonna continue saying that this village isn't anything, and I go for a fact, you and I served for, I served, we served six years together as trustees. And I served six years under you as a mayor. This village is a lot better off now than it was when it was under your administration. And as far as-
That's your opinion.
But we're not going to continue to badger and say negative things and derogatory things around here. I'm gonna tell you the truth.
Good. It's a fine time for you to start.
I've been telling the truth all-
No, you haven't. Whatever.
I don't have a conception. I'm not gonna sit there and make our community look bad, argue with the past.
No, I'm not.
Because in reality, you should be encouraging and helping us to move forward.
I am, but you keep denying it. You are putting me on the agenda, sir.
I'm not denying it because first of all-
You will not put me on the agenda, sir.
I am. Covington, I'm speaking right now. Would you please give me the opportunity to speak?
Go right ahead, sir.
Unfortunately, that isn't a position in the planning commission. I don't know where you're getting your information from. It's completely for the last time this one man was sworn in, but Patrick this one, he was sworn in, Bernita Martin and Gwen Rosenberg at the current time. So that's five positions. Tony Thompson, Bernita Martin. So there's your five people. So we're not gonna go back and forth. This is actually a village committee to conduct the business of the village. So we can continue this conversation, but please stop tearing this community down. Because there's one thing that people need to know. What you told me when I was on this team, you told me you'd do anything within your power to tear me and this administration down. Your life. Okay. Have a seat. Next person.
Oh, excuse me, conservator.
David Savier, please. I'll finish with you, madam.
The clerk.
That's up to her if she wants to answer.
Okay, can she answer?
That's up to her.
What's your question, Mrs. Covington?
The one about the paperwork that you told me?
Yes, I did send that, a list of everybody on the commissions and the elected and appointed officials to fill, to file their statement of economic interest. I did that based on the minute, the meeting where they had the appointments for plan commission, board of fire and police commission, finance committee, and maybe one other. You were appointed. At no point was I told that there was no vacancy on the plan commission at the time I sent the list of people required to file.
Okay, so do you pull it back? Who pulls the paperwork?
I will. I'm sorry.
Do you pull the paperwork back or what do I do? Because my signature is on it now.
I will contact Britt tomorrow morning.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I apologize.
No problem. Just trying to get clarification.
Thank you.
I did have a comment for, and I agree like what the mayor said, we are doing stuff here in the village. So I wouldn't want that either to be said. But manager Scott, for the finance committee, the planning, not the planning, the finance committee, the code enforcement committee, and economic development committee, I know a lot of people before it wasn't active. So in order for it to get started, they really need to have you to reach out to them to schedule that first meeting. Because they don't know who they are. So if you schedule that first meeting, then they can set up everything, figure out who the chair is, and they could run their own meetings in the future.
Okay, no problem. And just for clarity, it's finance, code enforcement, or?
And economic development.
Okay.
Because they didn't have any chairperson. It was brand new. So they kind of really needs to get established just by you reaching out to schedule that first meeting. After that, they have to select their chairperson and all that type of stuff. And then they have to do their own meetings.
And I am sure that the finance committee may have had a conversation about this, including the next two weeks.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Ma'am, Ms. Pickett?
Yes, trustee.
Finish. I remember voting for the people who signed up and Ms. Covington was one of those. We voted.
No, no, that was after this.
No.
Let me tell you something. Somebody got this down, we talked about 2006. And I don't think I'm true to the truth. There was appointments before you got elected to the board. You were not, not even a member.
So you made-
We were all here for Bernita Martin.
Where's the record?
Tony Thompson.
Where's the record?
Gwen Rosenberg, Barbara Caxton. And another person that's on the panel. We got five active members on the planning commission.
Where's the record, mayor? Where's the record of those appointments? Where's the record of those appointments?
I don't even, but I find out. Let me check.
The clerk, the clerk, she's not confused?
That's field of the planning commission that night. That field of the planning commission. That's how I said it. So far, I'm saying, sure, but that's not, that's not gonna get to the end. Yeah. That's a serious issue we're talking about. That we need to take care of.
I remember Phyllis. I do remember Phyllis.
That's the, that's the person. Phyllis Sanders, Barbara Caxton, Gwen Rosenberg, Tony Thompson, Bernita Martin. Thank you. You're absolutely right. It was Phyllis Sanders. It was Phyllis Sanders that filled that agency. But the fact is, it was Phyllis Sanders on the management. That's the fifth person. Thank you so much. Mr. Savier, let's go.
Good evening, mayor. Board of trustees and village manager. I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank each of you for trying to stay neutral during the situation we have with the University Park Baseball Association, which I'm here to represent. But I want to go on record and state that Donna Folcher has not-
Folcher over her name is crazy. People might not know.
Folcher Dealworth has done nothing illegal. Everything was done above board. Everything was voted by our board, including having those funds transferred into another account. So I want to personally apologize to you and your family who have may have heard those misrepresentations because that's not true. And I know in this community, lies get out there, they stay out there for years. So on behalf of our association, we do apologize to you for that. But I do want you to know that the meeting, the court appearance is tomorrow at 9:00 a.m. We went two weeks ago, but they assigned Judge Anderson to us. And of course, he knows us all. So he had to recuse himself, so he got pushed back. So hopefully by tomorrow, this will be resolved. But I did want to let you know that we do have children playing this year in the program. We have teams that are involved. So we keep you abreast as to opening day and the things that's going on in the community. So we want to say once again, thanks again for being as neutral as you possibly can. But as of tomorrow, we hope to be able to get started with our meetings and things and get moving, going forward with the organization. So that's where we are.
Thank you much, Mr. Savier. And I'd like to just make one comment because just reflecting back on that meeting, there was a comment made by Paul Trusty, Sonya Jenkins-Bell, that I was an organization asking for the truth. I did not help organize. I only support the youth activities in our community. For the record, Mayor Joe Rudes did not orchestrate, help, or organize any baseball organization within the village, within the village. University Park. Again, for the record, Mayor Joe Rudes was not an organizing member or participant in organizing any baseball league with Sonya Jenkins-Bell and Robin Walker, for the record. Thank you so much.
Right. Okay, for, that's for the record.
Before?
Yes.
Go on, back. Again.
You write your-
Mr. Pickett?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you ask me? Can you write that? I'm speaking.
Can you add a word?
I know. I'm just asking. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
What do you need, madam?
I need what you just said.
I'll, 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 in writing. You want me to put my statement in writing? Yes, yes, I certainly will.
But the only thing I want to do is I do want to acknowledge the mayor for allowing us to be a part of a baseball association in Cook County with your support. Because they could not have done it if we did not get that support, that written support letter from you. So we do want to thank you for that. Even though we're no longer with that association because of the things that occurred, we do appreciate the effort that you put forth. So I do want, just for the record, to let people know that you did at least get that opportunity done so that we could play in the prior years.
Thank you, David. And much luck and success in the season. And I hope I can throw out the first pitch because I got a main knuckle curve now.
We'll let you know. The invitation is always open. If anybody wants to come out, the invitation is always open. So we keep you abreast.
And trustee Williams has a comment if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
I just want to announce that my grandson, Mylan, will be playing.
He's on my team.
And I did apologize to Donna in private, and I'm doing it publicly. I didn't feel my comments were for or against either of those two ladies. Because I think both of them have done an outstanding job with our youth and bringing baseball to fruition. So my comment was from past things that went on with the organization. And I simply was speaking my truth since I've had three grandsons in the program. So I do want you to know, Mylan will be playing and I'm very happy to announce that.
Right, and I just want-
And you all have my, I'm gonna support the organization just I have in the past. Come to the games, root for the teams, buy nachos and concession. And have a good time.
And we appreciate that and we extend that to everyone else. But the only thing that kind of caught us off guard was when people say it's always been something with the baseball association. Prior to that point, the baseball association, you know, prior to 13 years ago, changed the management. I mean, Bobby Lathan, me, Coach Greg, Greg Murphy, we worked hard to get that, to keep those programs intact. And as we stepped away from the program, things changed. We're trying to come back, to bring back the quality of baseball and the program that we need and stop putting people in place who are more concerned about image and other things as opposed to helping these kids. So once again, I thank the board for staying out in the middle of all of this.
Thank you so much, Mr. Savier. All right, guys, that concludes our-
Wait, hold on, Mayor Rudes.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Trustee Donna-
I did want to make a comment as well because I appreciate David coming in and saying that and everybody else. But when it comes to, when someone comes to attack your character, you have to speak back onto it. I did not say anything last board meeting because we had a lot of things on the agenda. And I, we didn't want all that back and forth. So now I just want to make my statement, which is clerk, please add my statement to the record. I will email it to you.
Thank you.
But I would like to address the two comments that was made during the public comment section at the last board meeting. First, Robin Walker knowingly lied about me being involved with any misappropriation of baseball funds. Ms. Walker comment is false and it's not true. Secondly, Sonya Jenkins knowingly lied as well when she commented that no one ever tried to sit down with Ms. Walker to resolve the ongoing baseball board disagreements. And that's baseball disagreements. Both Ms. Walker and Ms. Jenkins' comments had no place at a village board meeting. Their purpose was to be malicious and gain sympathy for their false sense of reality. No matter how many times you say that lie, it would never gain any traction against someone who's blessed and highly favored in the eyes of the Lord. For those who are interested in hearing the truth and hopefully the results of the case between the baseball board members and the defendant, Robin Walker, tune in by Zoom Court tomorrow, Wednesday, February 28th at 9:00 a.m. The meeting ID, which is what David was saying, the meeting ID number is 815-76157370. And the pass code is 484121. Thank you, trustee Donna Folcher. I just want to let you know, this has nothing to do with this village. The stuff that came up has nothing to do with what's going on here in this village. And that's the focus that I am focused on up here as a trustee. Whatever happens in anybody else's organizations and groups, that's for them to deal with. But that should never be brought to a business setting that has nothing to do with it at all. So that's my statement.
Well, thank you very much, trustee Folcher Dealworth. Thank you so much. All right, we're gonna move on. That concludes, okay. That concludes our general public comment section.
And I would like to motion to suspend the agenda items F1, F2, F2A, F2B, F2C, F2D, G, G1A, G1B, G1C, H, I, and I.
So trustee, okay, wait a minute. Go ahead. There's a motion. Is there a second? There's a second. Motion by trustee Donna Folcher. Dealworth, second by trustee Brooks. I have a question.
Yeah.
Is there any particular reason why you would like to suspend these items? Because these are some of the items that were discussed in the committee of the whole. And one thing that really concerns me regarding this is the item G1B, A, item G1B, A and B. That's kind of concerning to me.
Okay, well, let me respond. First of all, us as trustees and the board should be able to vote on things based off of the information that we receive. Again, at the last board meeting, I asked for the invoices to be able to be seen in order for me to vote on Bill's PIB. I didn't receive it. It's been, it was four months. Here we go, another month again where it was so, it was sent to me, but none of us board members could open up any of the files to see it. Second, now we have an agenda packet. We're supposed to receive this packet before we get here. This is the first time I'm getting this packet. It was sent, but we cannot open it up. There is no way me as a trustee or any of us as a board can vote on anything if we do not receive any information. Whatever needs to be done, it should be done. This is, I'm steady saying the same thing every meeting about not being able to open up the files. There hasn't been a resolution to give us the files. Why not? So you expect us to come to a meeting, we don't see no invoices, we don't even see the packet. We have stuff on here talking about, oh, we have a consent agenda. We talked about it. But I know for item F2A, we said don't move it to the consent agenda, but it's on here. So no, I am not voting on anything. And we as a board should not discuss anything. Please tell me, any trustee, have you received, been able to open up any of these documents that you received?
No, this is not.
No, nobody has been able to open up. But I'm saying as for the packet. They had made changes. I mean, it's like we don't get the information. So if we can't, if we don't get the information, there's no reason we should be having a meeting. So that's why I'm saying suspend it until you all are capable enough to give us the information in enough time. This packet was sent to us yesterday. And then it was sent yesterday and we still couldn't see it.
Ma'am, I'd be recognized. So, yeah, I was not able to click on everything that trustee Folcher was talking about and was trying to get a little dialogue later today because I had learned, and which I just discovered, I guess there might be some mistakes to it. But at least on GB1, G1B, I'm sorry. G1, did I say it right? G1B, okay. That's in my balls. That he was not prepared or at least to what the board was going to vote on. So it was to my understanding that the suspension was gonna happen and that I did make effort to reach out to the mayor. Mayor's schedule was just as busy as everyone else's. That we were either gonna call a special meeting on Friday or Tuesday. I personally was calling him to tell him that, you know, we do this, that if we can, can we do it on Tuesday when I know I'll be able to walk? So that was the reason. Yes, yes, I would be having my procedure on Thursday. So I knew if, because I think we all, we're gonna be all in agreement. But I think that trustee Folcher does have a point that, you know, if you read something, you want to make sure you're voting yes on it. That would be the proper way and I would not take that away from her. Because I know what that feel like. If it's something there and you misread it, you'll pay a price. I give an example, Ms. Beck Fulcom's TIF agreement. I thought it said 10,000. I think Savier, he's not here, but I remember he said you missed a word each. And see, we end up paying her 1,000 each TIF. So that's very important if it's something that we seen and a trustee catch it, you know, you want to make sure you don't make the mistake. So I'm just giving my perspective of how I came about it. I did know that when I clicked on it initially, it just, it just didn't, it wouldn't come up. And so when I came here, I just asked trustee Williams. I said, oh, we got a packet, you know? Because I did want to comb through the bill's payable. Before whatever reason, I mean, if we can try it now, it's not, it's not gonna come up. Neither you, zoom in. It's not coming up, no matter what we do.
That's thoughtful because I guess my main concern is that we also let the residents, let our residents know as well. One of the items of concern is that, first of all, every, myself and every single board member that sits here are adamantly fighting against a rate increase with Aqua. On our agenda, we've got help from the CUB, the Citizens Utility Board, to intervene to help us fight against a rate increase.
Well, hold on. Because you're not supposed to be talking about the agenda items since I motioned to suspend it.
This is still a question.
Right?
It's still a question. Still a question.
Because you're putting stuff out there.
That's all right. I want, no, let me, let me get the phone.
She got technical.
Let me get the phone. Let him get me out.
We're talking about-
She got technical.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, so what's important, I just want to make sure that we do not miss an opportunity. So go ahead, let's go. We'll move on. Go ahead.
No, and so I'm just giving my perspective that I just wanted to be sure, I just wanted to make sure I was available for when you call it. Because I thought this, I wanted to double check with you that it was communicated to you. And then two, it was a little weather concern. Because I know before we all left here, there was tornado warnings and all that. So it was two things that, you know, I just wanted to make sure that we was on path for. So if this is just gonna be held off until Tuesday, we can do it next Tuesday.
That's why I suspended. It's not canceled, it's just suspended.
Yeah, because I was gonna say, so it's, so it's, so Bert, to my understanding, Bert Odelson, was he, was he finished with the resolution of the motion? Right, because I think that was the key thing that was left on the table as a question when we first learned this.
As far as the agenda item G1BA, motion to approve intervention of Odelson, Murphy, Fraser, McGrath to intervene in the class action lawsuit, that's already been allowed by the court. There is no motion to be made. There is nothing to review. Judge Anderson made that ruling shortly after when everyone appeared in court a few weeks ago.
Can we have a copy of what Judge Anderson decided?
No. So what he did-
Is it sealed?
No, it's not sealed. So what happened is he allowed the village to intervene in the case where before they weren't in the case, really.
But was that about the class action?
It's the class-
Or was it with the consent agreement?
It's, it's the same case.
It's both.
It's the same case. So the judge allowed our office to intervene. The court gave our office until today to submit a proposed written order, which states that, you know, the judge is allowing, it's already ruled that we're allowed to intervene. But in the motion to intervene, there was different requests made by our office on behalf of the village as the intervenor. And that all was included in the order. Proposed order was just submitted today and we'll get the order back from Judge Anderson probably within a few days, a week or two. And he's either going to allow all that language or not. There's nothing for the board to vote on.
Well, why are we discussing?
Once the order is entered, we get a copy of the order. I don't know why it's on the agenda like that.
And so we're still discussing it?
You know, you're discussing.
We never.
My point is, there's no reason to have a special meeting. There is nothing to vote on either tonight.
We have other items here.
No, no, other items. I'm just talking about that item.
Of these other items. In other words, you're saying with our special meeting, these items, no items are exempt, basically, pretty much.
Those other items, if you wanna have a special meeting, talk about that.
Yeah, definitely have to have the other items. The concern was item A and B.
And B, and B, we're asking for our office to file an appearance to get the intervention on the Citizens Utility Board action. So we're, we get notices, we're told that when the hearings are coming up, there's a hearing that's set in July. And I believe that Bert sent over an engagement letter of an attorney who specializes in that type of law and has dealt with the Citizens Utility Board for about 47 years. And that engagement letter is not part of the packet. You could look at that, but that's what's up. As far as B.
We don't know any of the details about B. We don't know any of the details about G.
Attorney McGrath, from my understanding, we were gonna be talking about this in executive session for the potential.
The particular specifics and the.
There we go. So we didn't get, I didn't get the information about it. So we're supposed to be talking about it in the executive session, which that's what we should be going into after this. So it being here, we can't talk about, we can't vote on something we haven't even talked about it yet. We can't.
Okay, so item A, there is no need to take, there is no motion to take.
Right, there's no motion. So that's why I'm saying this stuff is conversation in the second session.
So I'm unclear, I don't know if you're tabling it or what you wanna do, because there was discussion about conducting a special meeting, but you don't need one for A, because it's been allowed. We could talk about it in executive session, certainly. And same with item B, in executive session. So just when I heard talk of we have to have a hearing and trustee Brooks having a procedure and scheduling it, for these two items, you don't need to have a special meeting. If any of the other items, you wanna continue to another date, you know, the proper motion would be actually to table it and to continue it to a date certain. You know, if you want to go into more detail and talk about these items, have a different date other than tonight.
Okay. So now we got a motion in the second, now for two.
Vote.
Suspend. Roll call.
Wait. Yes, she did.
Yes, I'm sorry.
So I just wanted to confirm because I'm on my way on Saturday to stay here because it was requested that the invoices be placed in the dropouts. And I tested it in court, so did the dropouts in the summer?
I received some invoices. That was from, what I asked you for was for December and January, right? I got some with. That's what the email request was for, is for December and January. And I got December and January. It was some that said February, a couple bills in there for February. It was some for January, it was some for December. That's why I sent back a response to you, manager Scott, to say, what does these dropbox items cover? Does it cover December to January like I asked, or is it including February? I never got, February, I never got a response. Yeah, I did. Yes, absolutely. That'd be good. Yeah, no, it did work fine, but it was just, like I asked, like, what does it consist of?
Thank you. And that's why I suggested at that meeting that we get the dropbox and have access so that I could send it to them when they voiced, when trustee Folter. And I was not aware until today that we had a dropbox.
Ma'am, may I be recognized? Before in the dropbox, all the folders were put into the month and the year. Can we put those folders back? Your invoice you asked for, December 23, invoice is in December 23. January 2024, put them in January 24. So there's no confusion when we go into the dropbox to look at the invoices and the information. Also, I wanna state, can we have Daryl fix everyone's laptop, computer? Because we are unable to tap. When it taps, like theo, trustee Brooks said, it just spins. So we need to have a session with him to straighten out our laptops, our phones, whatever we're looking at, in order for us to see the information. Because all of us were out of the water today trying to look at that. I would like to have that set up where all of us can have our devices given to him and showing that we can get into the information so we can see it on time.
Thank you. You know, because I was not aware until it was brought to me that you guys could not get it. Because when I would get it from finance, from Melinda, I could open it on my laptop, but I could not open it. Well, I never tried on my iPad. I couldn't open it on my phone. But that's why I made the suggestion about the dropbox.
Yeah, I can open it on, the Word documents I can open, but anything you said after that?
And all of those are in PDF format.
Couldn't open none of the PDFs.
Every one of them, always. But before, we were putting them in the dropbox.
Yes, and we were able to see.
That was canceled. And so when I get access or information on the dropbox, I can send them to, you know, I can put them in the dropbox, that's not a problem. Because I even spoke with Melinda today and a thought came up, maybe, I said, maybe when they get them before they open them, save them as a PDF.
Yeah, we couldn't, you could.
You click on it and it starts spinning.
So when you click, when you click on the icon, the information that you sent to us, it spins, it stops, and nothing happened. You assume it's gonna open, but nothing opened.
Oh, I know what you're talking about.
So you double tap, even, I even tried to just, on the iPad, I couldn't get in there because I was blocked. So it was like nothing. So that's why I'm asking Daryl to assist with our devices to make sure we do have access before the next meeting or something.
And I think, well, I did speak with him, I called him today. He did tell me he was ill, but he had begun to work on getting this dropbox situated all straightened out.
So once we get our laptops, phones, everything fixed, and dropbox straightened out, can we please get the information more than three days? That's not enough time. I don't know about everybody else, I have a regular life. And I need more than three days. Look at this. This is what I'm given. And I'm supposed to review this tonight and vote aye? No. No, because this is what it consists of. This is what it really is. It's too much for me to review in a few, tonight. And that's too, it's, I need it more than three days.
Those are the important.
I, I know that, but if we, but we already.
In six.
And then all of those didn't pop up. All, I got error messages for some of those attached.
All of them?
Yeah. So I don't know if anybody can, can you see this, Niva? Do you think you can review this in one day?
See, I do all my electronic, so yeah.
So even if it's electronically, you can't review it in a day? Or three, two days? Or three days when you have a life?
Well, see, that's why, you gotta, there's no more need for, for people that work part time. People deserve better than that. People live here 24/7, 365, they need full-time representation.
Our meetings are two weeks apart.
So if you were to.
So within two weeks.
By Friday, before that Tuesday meeting, would that be sufficient?
No.
So we typically have them on Tuesday or Wednesday and ideally, when I talk to other towns, how they do it, they try to set the board packet out on Friday so that you have the whole weekend, you know, you have certain days, it's important to you. It's really hard to turn a packet around that, you have to make changes to resolutions and things like that, which is somehow, the wear and fall handle that. But if we were able to get it out on Friday, making sure that the monarchs, the credit card statements and the invoices are in the dropbox. And if we were to get that agenda, the packet to you by Friday.
Is five days unreasonable?
That's Friday, so Friday, Saturday, something, Monday, Tuesday, if we got it to you Friday, it would be very hard to turn the packet around within four, five days. I mean, it wasn't certain, Tommy. I think it's.
So if, so if we, so if we have our cow, we have our consent agenda two whole weeks before. So then you have your agenda meeting the Tuesday, maybe, you know, before the next meeting, that's, that's a whole week.
Well, see, so basically, if it goes the way it should, if the items that are transferred from the cow already compose a majority of the agenda, and if there's, like these other two items, those other two items come later and it would be added on. But basically, when we do the cow meeting, those are the things that we're gonna move forward.
But you still have to review it because little changes could be made.
Yeah, I understand. Like the clerk said, Friday would be ideal this week if we pull it up that way. And if, because that's the same thing that they post, if I'm not mistaken. So we can get the package out at the same time, that's a step in the right direction. That's all I can say.
A day or two, if, if, if technically the computer and printer are working.
So I will need to send you all of the attachments and everything that you would need to create a packet by Monday?
No, Thursday, by Thursday. Okay, okay.
Thank you, manager Scott. That's all we ask.
That means when are we gonna? Wait a minute, Mr., Mr. Mayor. Can we finish this?
Yes, ma'am.
So that means we'll be having our agenda prep meeting when? Tuesday or Wednesday?
Absolutely.
Which one? Tuesday? Okay. Oh, what?
Oh, the motion to suspend the items on the board, we have this motion by trustee Donna Folter, that was the second by trustee Brooks.
Great. Trustee Lewis.
Both sides.
Trustee McFatt.
Both sides.
Trustee Folter.
Both sides.
Trustee Thompson.
Both sides.
Trustee Williams. Trustee Brooks.
Both sides.
Mayor Ruditz.
Both sides.
Takes care of. 10 o'clock.
What'd you say?
Unless, unless. Unless a trustee feel like they wanna give their report, I'm gonna make a motion to go to executive session.
One, one thing I just wanna announce.
Yep.
Okay. The University Park Lions is having a spring flag football tryouts. Everyone to join with the Lions family, promoting physical fitness and youth involvement in our community. Registration is grades from kindergarten to eighth grade. Practice begins April 9, 2024. Season begins April 20, 20th, 2024. Practice days will be Tuesdays and Thursdays, 5:00 PM to 6:00 PM. Game days will be Saturday. Game times will be 10:00 AM, 10:30 AM, 11:00 AM, 11:30 AM. If you have any questions, you can contact Coach Vennard Alsberry at 708-341-6823. Also, if you're interested in coaching, please reach out to Coach Tutu Franklin and Mr. Vennard Alsberry. Thank you.
Miss, can I get your report?
Yes.
Anybody else want to say anything before we go?
Yeah, I did. I wanted to say one thing. Well, not to say one thing, but I just wanna thank the mistrust and the Black Club for putting on a good heritage showcase this past weekend. It was great. It was nice. It was excellent to see all the elected officials that did turn out. I was, I was glad to see that. The support, we definitely would love more residents to be able to support the different events that the community organizations put together. But I appreciate all those that did come out. And I just wanted to thank them for their time and efforts, the Black Club, for all the work that they put into the showcase. And this is probably the last of the, this is the end. So this is the end of the Black History Month. So I just wanted to make sure I did acknowledge them for putting something on in the community.
Thank you very much. Sure, trustee.
Yes, I would like to inform you all that Faith Movers Church will be having a Black History performance on Thursday, February 29 at 7:00 PM. So you all are welcome.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Trustee Williams?
Actually, this is one of the things, trust, for the Black History Celebration. It's the second one that I attended and she always does an outstanding job. It's growing, it's more and more people coming to it and it's really educational. She picks the best of the best, poets, dancers, you name it. It's excellent. So I look forward to it every year.
Awesome. And it's always good to have great citizens, resident participation in the community. The minute we start turning to each other and not on each other, our community becomes a large struggle. Trustee Thompson?
Yes, hi, everybody again. I did try to meet Mr. Robinson at the VMW meeting so we can get our veterans committee going, but he couldn't make it. And, you know, they don't allow you to stay if you're not a member. But before I got kicked out, I was able to recruit one University Park resident to the committee. He said he needed two members. I recruited one there and I recruited another one Saturday. So next thing we gotta do is just schedule a meeting, talk about what we need to do.
All right, trustee, team, right on.
So just to say, piggyback with the thanks of mistrust and the Community Black Club, I also wanna give a thank you to the Gloria Taylor Foundation. For those who know, Mrs. Karen Brooks works there. So that's a big thanks to Dr. Dixon and her kids. They also served us food, so residents didn't have to get up. Also, I was glad that those vendors, thank you for coming out. They had them all there. One of them actually gave me my hand massage and do my, yes, I'm going to see her on a regular basis for the pedicures. So Karen Brooks, Bernice O'Brien, I forgot who else was helping, Katrina. Yeah, so I guess now for the next, I'm so used to mistrust calling at night, guess I won't get them phone calls at night about what to do next. But, you know, it's fun to see that our residents, mistrust, you gotta give it to mistrust. She, she is an icon in the community.
Can we give her a hand? Let's give her a hand.
So I'm quite sure we're gonna see each other before then, but if I'm not mistaken, Madam Clerk, early voting does start right away, right? It's always started. So we had, I think it was three, four officials that was there. I just want the public, this is gonna be very important for all of us. We gotta come out and vote. University Park, Ms. Strout was up at the podium last time and she can fill the pulse of the village when she register kids. And right now, she's not filling our kids because they're not doing what they're supposed to do. We really need to win this election. The soul of our country is really dependent on these elections. Everyone has their issues, from Gaza to healthcare to numerous things. So I wanna encourage everyone, because I wanna say that the primary is, might be the night of, is it the 19th? So we'll, on her birthday. So it's Pisces. So I just, if you're gonna see my face a little bit more to these next couple of weeks, I have a procedure tomorrow. Oh, by the way, let me start off by saying, thank you, Madam Clerk. Oh, by the way, let me start off by saying, thank you, Madam Clerk, uh, trustees, you called and checked on me. Uh, the first one was painful, this should be the, the second and last one, as you know, I'm not walking, but it came, but, um, it did help, it hurt, but it helped, but I wanted, also, I, I did want to say, people call you to see how you're doing, not to see what they can get out of you. That was the beauty of it. So thank you for the prayers. And like I said, Madam Clerk, and before I close, you, Madam Clerk will call you, text you a prayer, she gonna make sure you all right. So Madam Clerk, I don't know what we would do without you. Even when Grandma died, it was a long drive, but like I said, hit Missouri, what texts come through? Madam Clerk. So, thank you, Madam Clerk, your words are always beautiful and are very encouraging, uh, help us get through day by day, because I think I even called you to say, how do you get through the pain? You say grin?
And bear.
And bear. So I'll be grinning and bearing on Thursday, I yield my time.
Midlife tune up, you be all good.
Yeah, it's still tuned up, yeah, yeah.
Been praying for you, Doc.
I want to run them courts like you.
Amen, just a matter of time, you're a young man. Anybody, trustee, anybody else? So, I, I want to make a couple of comments, and then we're gonna, there's a motion, then we'll go for a second for executive session, but I'd like to just discuss a few items that I think that's really important to our residents, and there's some things that they really need to know. The first thing, the Village of University Park are not recipients, and we are not requesting immigrant housing. We are not participating in any federal housing programs or state housing programs. Although, we do have immigrants, asylum seekers, that are now living within our community, and they're living in the private development on Exchange Boulevard, the village is not encouraging people to bring immigrants or asylum seekers to the Village of University Park. As we all know, it's not just a Chicago problem, it's a State of Illinois problem. So there is an issue about the humanitarian effort, and I'm gonna give my opinion, and I don't know if people care for it or not, but I'm just gonna speak the truth. I don't have a problem with the humanitarian efforts on helping out people, but I think we need to rewind the calendar, because there are so many of our own homeless populations that were here prior to arrival of emi, immigrants or asylum seekers. So I'm gonna look at this as a very unique opportunity to encapsulate funding, so we can decrease our homeless population among our homeless veterans and our homeless population, whether you believe it or not, there are some people who decide to be homeless all on their own. But for the asylum seekers and immigrants to jump in the front of the line, in front of those who have been vested here for their lifetime, instead of those who have fought and died for our country, I think that's where the problem is. So, that's what's going on in the village, we are not encouraging resident, I mean migrants here in our community. Actually, we had 16 buses, and we were fortunate enough, because we have a strong board here that was aggressively, we called a special meeting to ensure that we passed an ordinance and a law to, any of those buses come again, we will impound those buses, and anything necessary to ensure that they do not impact the residents of University Park. They're already making a heck of an impact on our school district and our services. So as we speak now, we are not currently seeking any money, funding, or housing for asylum seekers. Just to dismay some of the rumors out there that the board is encouraging migrants to come here, nonsense, 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 it's not fact. I think we all share a genuine concern, because if I'm not mistaken, we're all God-fearing people, and we want to do the best for people at the end of the day. The second thing I'd like to talk about is our rate increase that Aqua is proposing. There is no way in the world that the village is going to sit still and allow them to increase our rates without a fight. So there might be a little silence now, but there's silence before the storm, and through the grace of God, the Citizens Utility Board, otherwise known as CUB, has jumped in to advocate on our behalf, with the village and other law firms are jumping on behalf. So we're gonna fight the ICC and Aqua like we've never, ever fought before, because now people starting to look at that company as predatory, as strictly predatory. We're fighting for rights, access to clean and healthy water, there's no way in the world that a community should just be bound to have this source of water and no choices whatsoever. So there's a big fight on our hands, and I think that we're well-equipped to fight this battle. Also, I was invited to the White House to speak regarding our infrastructure dollars. I had the opportunity to go to the White House and speak for a day, do the one-on-one sessions with our Pete Buttigieg and the decision-makers regarding infrastructure. It's my goal, and I think I'll get the whole board to support me, we're looking for infrastructure dollars, hear it here first, to get away under the Pharaoh's arm of Aqua Water. We have to start somewhere. I think that everyone would agree, if we don't start the process, it'll never happen. So the process has started, we're looking forward to, the first step would try to get funding to start getting our own infrastructure. And as things progress, we'll continue to inform our residents. So I think those are some of the main things that I really wanted to talk about, some things that are really pressing and some great concern to our residents, so we can be on the same page. No, Mayor Joe Rudez or the Village Board of Trustees is not receiving money or funding to house any asylum seekers or immigrants. We're looking for solutions on how they're going to blend into the community, because they're here now. So we have to find out what we can do to, to the best of our ability to ensure that the quality of life in our community stays as it is and actually improves. So those are some of the things I wanted to speak about, and I know we want to prolong this, so I'll be continuously having communication with our residents, I'll be posting out my website and my podcast, I'll be talking about some real factual things, and anything I tell you, I can back it up with the black and white, because it ain't, if it don't make sense, it just don't make sense. The truth is the truth. So thank you, board of trustees. I got a podcast coming. Step on up on there. But, you know, we got trustee Gina Williams, trustee Theatlist Brooks, trustee Jill Thompson, trustee Donna Folcher, trustee McFadden, trustee Lewis, Madam Clerk, Manager Scott, Jim Ellis, and a conglomerate of people in University Park who know that this is an up-and-coming, thriving community, and we will not be intimidated by a powerhouse such as Aqua to use the acts of gentrification to remove our hard-working citizens from this valuable land so they can come and run their own agenda. We will not lay down. University Park is prime. Ingress egress off 557, two golf courses, one public, one private, a beautiful lake, a beautiful university where you can get every level of education in the Village of University Park, from head start to your master's and PhD at Governor's State, access to rail at Metro Station. So we have it all. So you can understand why some people in America will want to captivate this community, not to mention the third airport less than eight miles away, south of the airport, I mean, south of University Park. So, University Park is on the move, look around, things are popping up that's never been there before. So I'm asking for the residents' support, it's time to knock the nonsense out and handle the business of the people. Thank you so much.
I just want to piggyback one thing.
I did, you've been talking about contesting this reward, um, increase, breaking this, I just wanted to get the website, which is www.icc.illinois.com/complaints. We're asking for all residents to go onto that website and file complaint. We want to make sure the University Park residents are saying, speaking their voice and contesting this increase.
Because they say it's.
We want to make sure that we do it, so, and that is, I know trustee Gina has put some stuff out on her door, just pray, I sent some stuff out to a lot of young people, but the website here is www.icc.illinois.com/complaints.
All right, and also, before, before, you know what, and I, I know you got a comment, trustee, um, Lewis, but I'd just like to applaud the court and Judge John Anderson for his decision allowing our law firm to intervene in a law, in a lawsuit with a predatory company such as Aqua. So I applaud Judge John Anderson for advocating for justice and equality for the residents of the Village of University Park.
Just piggyback off of, uh, trustee Falter, please fill out the forms, because they're saying there are no complaints on the site from the residents, so they think that we're cool with what they're, what's going on. What I also want to say is the stairs at the metro station are, is fixed. Finally, the stairs are open, it is now fixed, we are able to walk up the stairs, but it's a long way to go. There are no, it's a long way to go. But the stairs are fixed at the metro station. Again, please go on the site and fill out the information. If we don't have, fill out the information, it's not a fight for us.
And let me just say, if you don't fill it out, if you talk to one of the service reps, they'll take your information over the phone, and they'll put it on the site for you. They'll ask, do you want us to put a statement on there? And you can tell them what you want, and they'll put it on there. So if you don't go on the website, call their toll-free number, I put it on next door more than one time, to let people know to contact the ICC and give them a complaint. This is serious business.
Yeah, and you know what, you know what, there, there's a problem that I think that all of us can address, we need to write our legislators, because what the problem is in the State of Illinois, there is no cap on public utilities. So that gives these public utilities companies like Nycor and ComEd, who can, and these water companies, I think they're two only private water companies, Illinois American and Aqua in the State of Illinois, that gives these predatory companies the ability to continue to charge and charge and charge. So we're gonna advocate, maybe we can put legislation in Springfield to put a cap on public utilities, because they've been raping citizens over the State of Illinois for the longest. That's where we need to stop at, but, put a cap on public utilities. That's the thing I'll be taking to Springfield on lobby day.
Yeah, not only is there a presidential race in November, but every senate seat is up for reelection. Every senate seat is up for reelection, so those that are not doing, you can vote them out. At the presidential, people are not paying attention to the, the senate race. Everybody's up for reelection in November, so that's something to think about as well.
See, all right, thank you, ma'am. We got a motion in the second, roll call, Madam Clerk?
For purposes of, purposes of the nation.
For State of purpose.
Mm-hmm. First of all, let's go out of our, there needs to be a motion to be made going to executive session, that made by Brooks.
Brooks, but I need a second.
You need a second?
A second.
Okay. Second by Thompson, roll call, Madam, and we'll be going into executive session for the personnel, litigation, for the purposes of litigation and personnel. Roll call, Madam Clerk.